Good evening. Welcome to our Pitt County Commissioners Meeting on November the 19th. I'll call our meeting to order and we'll first do our roll call, please. And do we need to excuse Mr. James if we choose to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Mr. Hammond, if you'll confirm, please. Next, we will have our invocation and our pledge, the invocation by Commissioner Garris and the pledge by Commissioner Smith.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for the opportunity of assembling together as a community. We thank you, Father, for each one that is here this evening for their interest in county government, and we pray that you might bless us as a community that we will always serve you. We pray that your blessings might be upon this board this evening as we deliberate various issues, help us in doing that which is best for those that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Will we please vote? Okay, our next item is a public hearing. Mr. Rhodes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have one public hearing for you tonight. This is for conditional use permit for residential daycare facility. And as we go through each time we handle one of these particular conditional use permits, this is a quasi judicial procedure, and there are a number of items that we must adhere to. Again, this is similar to holding court and establishing the facts. Folks that would like to speak tonight will be placed under oath, and as far as any appeal would be to Superior Court. And with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to the board to swear in those that are willing to speak or wishing to speak tonight.
Okay, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this issue, they will have to be sworn in, and if you'll come forward, the clerk will swear you in. Okay? Mr. Rhodes. Okay, no one seems to want to speak, so Mr. Rhodes, you'll have to be sworn in. If you want to speak, you can now, but you don't have to speak just because you were sworn in, but you can't speak if you haven't been.
As far as the request today is for the residential daycare, it's located at 2832 Old River Road, and we'll show you the location on the map in just a minute. This particular area of the county is designated in the land use plan as suburban residential, again, closer in toward the city of Greenville, more suburban in nature. Just a reminder, this type of facility, as we deal with larger daycares, this is a residential daycare facility, and it's defined as a childcare facility located in a residence, so it is owner, it is inhabited, the primary use is for residents, and it's where between two and eight children would receive daycare. So again, relatively small facility. Did want to bring this to your attention, this is the hours of operation in this particular case are extended longer than most that you deal with. They're looking at trying to assist folks that are working any given shift, but they are meeting the letter of the ordinance as far as not operating 24 hours a day. They're closing down for 30 minutes. So again, hours of operation from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., 23 and a half hours. The location is shown here on the screen. Old River Road is the dividing line between the area on the resource conservation area on one side and also the rural residential area on the other. The area that we're contending with is bounded by yellow, and it is currently in residential or rural residential zoning. Just adjacent to this is Teal's Estate subdivision. Also, there is a salvage yard operation just adjacent to it, the red color, which is general And again, you can see some of the existing land uses there. Going on to the requirements of the zoning ordinance for these, as you're familiar with already, the three main requirements for residential daycare facilities, security fencing always required, also look at certain requirements for location and the hours of operation. In addition, staff usually goes through the criteria that's mentioned in the zoning ordinance as to whether this particular land use fits into this particular neighborhood, and several of the criteria I'll go through now. The first one being, will this particular use materially endanger the public health or safety? We feel like it will not. Will it injure the value of the adjoining property? And again, this is within a residential dwelling. We do recognize that this is almost an around-the-clock, almost an around-the-clock operation, but we do not feel like it will substantially injure the values of the adjacent properties. The person that's actually seeking to operate this is a relative of a lot of the property owners in close proximity. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe that it is. Again, it's a residence, primary use is a residence within a residential area. And is it in conformity with our existing land use plans and policies? And we believe that it is. So with that, Madam Chair, our recommendations for tonight, first, to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete, and also, motion two would be to have it comply with the regulations of the zoning ordinance with also their request of operating from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And with that, we're ready for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to it that has been sworn in? Okay, if no one wishes to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other commissioners? Yes?
Madam Chair, I'm very familiar with that location, and as stated, it is in harmony with the recommendation that Mr. Rhodes and the planning board so described. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept this and that we pass this.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, it's passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next item is recognition of three scouts.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to send a letter of achievement to these three scouts.
Let's vote, please. Could we go on and someone make a motion to accept the resolution?
So move.
Okay.
Madam Chair, you just need to finish your last vote.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Commissioner James.
We've already done that.
All right then, I'm sorry that I-
That's okay. Will you vote on this issue, please? Thank you. Thank you. And now this is for the other resolution. Commissioner Hammond, we need one more vote, please. Oh, okay.
This evening, we once again are going to honor three of our local Boy Scouts here in Pitt County who have achieved the prestigious rank, rank, rank of Eagle Scout. And nationally, I believe, five to six percent have recently achieved this rank. I think in Pitt County is much higher than that. We have three, and as I call your name, if you'll come forward, then with your family or whoever you brought, we'll recognize you up here publicly. So if I can call Paul Boswell first? Go and read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, it's entitled Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Paul Boswell for achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his project. He painted murals inside the Humane Society Building in Greenville, North Carolina. This is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. It's 19th day of November, 2012, signed by the chairman, Beth Ward. I'll let her present it.
Congratulations, Paul. Very proud of you all because it's always nice to have a family behind the scout. Do you want to say anything, Paul? That's fine. Congratulations.
Next, we'll call up Patrick Lentz, his family. If you want someone to take a picture, we can, if you need. Kathy can, or, well, you've got, Mike Taylor's gonna get it.
Mike will get it if you want to come up.
If you want to join the-
No, you come on, he's right there. He knows a lot more about the cameras and technology than I do, so that doesn't say very much.
Again, Patrick has achieved the Eagle Scout Award, and for his project, he built a platform for training rescue dogs for the city of Greenville at the new rescue training facility beyond River Park North. And I'll let the chairman present this certificate.
Patrick, congratulations. Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You too, also.
Thank you. All right, our third recognition tonight is to Thomas Martinez. If you'll come forward, please. For Thomas's project, he did a project that was to the benefit of Pitt County Government with our district park. He built eight benches out of treated wood for the Alice Keane Park on County Home Road. Appreciate your project.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I know you're proud of him. Yes, we are. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I know we said this in the-
Would you like to say something?
Okay, that's fine. Usually they don't, but I'd like to give them that offer. We usually say, we have said in the past, most of these Eagle Scout projects, the wonderful thing about them is they do have something to do with our community. And in fact, most of the time it does, and it's either beautification or service or helps to make our parks better or campuses better where the schools are, and there's just been such a variety.
Yes.
We're very proud of all the scouts. Thank you, Paul.
Our next recognition. If Commissioner Ephraim Smith will come down?
I can read if you want me to. Can you start off? Or I can read if you want me to. I'll read this back. Okay. I said I'll read this one.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna tell you all the whereas. Okay. Resolution of appreciation honoring Ephraim Smith. Whereas Ephraim Smith began his service as a Pitt County Commissioner in December of 2008, and Ephraim Smith has provided outstanding representation for the citizens of Pitt County and was an advocate for citizens' concerns from District B for four consecutive years. Whereas the citizens of Pitt County will long remember Ephraim Smith for his contribution to PCMH Board of Trustees, Pitt County Board of Education, and we meant for it to be PCMH because that's what it was. That's right. Pitt County Board of Education, Pitt County Planning Board Liaison, and the Rural Planning Organization. Whereas Ephraim Smith demonstrated genuine and sincere concern for all Pitt County citizens, and Ephraim Smith was always willing to share his knowledge related to the history of Pitt County and is well spoken, particularly on matters related to agriculture and drainage. Whereas Ephraim Smith demonstrated his commitment to public education and remains an advocate for technical education and STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Initiatives in Public Education. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby commend Ephraim Smith for providing stalwart and able leadership and diligent service to the board and to the citizens of Pitt County doing his service as Commissioner, adopted this day, the 19th of November, 2012, and signed by me. Do you want to say something?
I'll say it at the end.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something addressed to these three young men and specifically their parents, but the brevity of the resolution, presentation of it to you tonight does not in a way lessen the true significance of what you've earned, the hard work that you've gone through, the foundation that it has given you. And of all the resolutions that we present as the Board of Commissioners, the ones for the Boy Scouts is right up at the top, and we thank you.
That's true. Thank you very much, Mr. Wentz. Do we have anybody signed up for public address?
Yes, ma'am, we have two people. Nancy Colville is first.
Madam Chair, as we say before every public address, is Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address prior to speaking. All comments should be informative and constructive, and appropriate comments, including profanity or personal attacks, will not be tolerated.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Colville. I reside in Greenville, and my address is on file. And I'm back here again. First, I'd like to thank you for addressing the attendance record at the ABC Board, but there's a couple of other issues that I would like to share with you, not because you can do something about it, but because I'd a courtesy to you. I have called Agnes Stevens, who is the Public Affairs Director in Raleigh with the ABC Board Commission, and expressed my concerns to her, and basically what I wanted was a clear understanding to the effect whether this board has to follow the public meeting laws and rubber rules that all the agencies, state agencies have to follow, because there seem to be, according to the board here, a gray area to the administrator. Ms. Stevens told me that absolutely they have to follow every one of those rules. My concern is with the going into closed session without stating on the what general statute they're going and coming out of closed session and never saying what happened, if any action was taken, and if they did vote on it, and so on and so forth. The other thing is that these meetings are not audiotaped. The administrator does not have a computer that she can be taking notes as the meeting progresses, and then at her discretion, she puts together a regulation, the minutes, and I have a concern with that, because this is an agency that operates with millions of dollars, millions, and there's really no record. There's no audiotape, there's nothing. So it is, if there ever a disagreement of who voted for what or who said what, there's no record. This is wrong, and it needs to be addressed. And I know you cannot do anything, but I think you need to be aware. And I will follow up on this. I intend to write a letter to Ms. Stevens. The people that are there now are commissioners, former commissioners, finance officer, everybody there knows better. And the administrator may not. She claims she's not aware of it, she claims it applies to her, she claims they're not an agency, a state agency, but the fact of the matter is that they need to follow the rules like everybody else. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a resident, looks, appears to be from Old West Haven, about the 2012 tax impact. I can't read that. Mr. Leach, I'm sorry.
Good evening, and at risk of overstating the obvious, I sincerely believe Pitt County needs more tax revenue. City of Greenville needs more tax revenue. My whole concern is where it's coming from, as you should probably share the same concerns. I put a four-page handout together, if you'll pass that around, and all of the facts are backed up on some flash drives that I have for distribution. Basically, the four pages show that $2 million in tax dollars for Pitt County were reduced from 23,514 owners, and all of them had properties valued at more than $100,000. Thirty-one, or 3,124 property owners had properties above $300,000, and they all received tax deductions or reductions of $451 on average. So they accounted for 1.4 million of the reductions that were granted with the 2012 reevaluations. Basically, 20,000 parcels worth under $100,000 were increased by $655,000. In other words, the state or the county picked up a lot of money, $655,000, from the poorer valued homes. Now, that wasn't by accident. That was because of the fact, in my opinion, unusual transactions, as I've talked about here before, or closures that were fixed up and resold, houses that were flipped, unusual circumstances happened at the lower value homes. Wasn't anybody was out to get the poor people, it just worked out that way. Pitt County considered these unusual transactions as normal, and the reduced volume of regular sales basically swayed the lower property values to look like they've been increased. The data supporting that is on these flash drives. It's a 24-Meg file. If you're going to use a flash drive, please take one, otherwise I'll take them back because I can reuse them. Bottom line is, during the greatest recession of our lifetimes, no values really increased unless somebody put money into their properties. The higher value properties should have decreased more than the lower value properties, but the lower value properties that had nothing done to them did not increase in value, they just weren't being sold because people were underwater on mortgages. By not establishing fair values, I really believe that Pitt County Government in total, just through maybe not considering all the right things, failed its citizens. And ironically, most of the houses that were sold at the higher values were never even brought up to the higher value that they were purchased at. So raising, if I may have 10 seconds, raising the millage rates for the next three years is just going to penalize the poor people even more. Thank you very much for your time, and I know you've got a tough job to do.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Okay, do we have anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Our next items for report, the manager, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Few things to report. The next meeting this month, actually for next month, will be December 3rd and then December 17th. December 3rd will be at 9:00 a.m., December 17th at 6:00 p.m. Do have two other things that were, I wanted to mention. Commissioner James, at the last meeting, had asked for the topic of reevaluation to be put on the agenda. Because he was not here tonight, we did not put on the agenda, and at this point, we're looking at having the tax administrator come forward on January the 14th to do a 2012 revale overview, and Mr. James has an agreement to wait until that date after the holidays. One other thing, real quick. The Pitt County Courthouse was recently featured in a magazine, state magazine, called North Carolina Lawyer, has an article about the history of the courthouse and Judge Duke and the different renovations and additions in the old historic courtroom. Just want to bring that to the public's attention that we had it featured in this publication. And with that, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Then our next order of business is Ms. Kathy Booker, our tax collection report.
Good evening. The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, which is July through October 2012, the combined collection rate for real and personal property and registered motor vehicles is 63.37. That is a slight increase as compared to the rate one year ago of 63.50. This is down in the month, but we're still slightly ahead for the year, the fiscal year on that. And we continue to pursue all outstanding taxes through necessary enforcement statutes, including bank levies, wage garnishments, sheriff levies, rent levies, the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, and NREM foreclosure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Good to hear. We're still, thank you again.
Motion to approve their report.
All right, let's vote.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest Ms. Booker had one of these distributions that was given.
Do you have one?
And-
Get that vine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oops, I'm sorry, Kathy. I didn't know I had that much strength behind it. Okay, next, we have our attorney, Janice Gallagher. She's going to report her legislative goals update.
Thank you. I wanted to provide a periodic update on where we are with your legislative goals. On October 20th of this year, this board adopted seven legislative goals for the 2013-14 biennium, and those goals are listed in your agenda, as part of your agenda package, but I suppose for the, as a reminder and for the benefit of those listening, we had seven goals, and just briefly, it was general revenue protection to support efforts to preserve the existing local revenue base, to oppose efforts towards collective bargaining, to oppose any efforts to shift transportation funding from the state to the county, to preserve the legislation that allows us to operate a local electronic offender monitoring program, to eliminate the moratorium on contingency fee tax audits, and to exempt nonprofit corporations from the payment of sales tax, and that's that where they pay it in and have it refunded back. And then we had a seventh goal, to require drug testing for unemployment benefit recipients. Those were the seven goals that were adopted on August 20th, and this interim status report is really just to let you know the preliminary work that's been done towards accomplishing these goals prior to the General Assembly reconvening on January 30th of next year. The manager and I have worked together with the staff of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which is your lobbying organization, to gain their support of these goals, as they have lobbyists on the floor of the General Assembly every day during the session. And so in September, the manager and I presented in writing all of these goals to the association for their legislative goals processed. All seven goals were accepted by the association and fed into their steering committee review process. What they do is, and some of your board members serve on those steering committees, and they analyze each of the goals and determine which ones will move forward to the next stage of the process to garner their support at the end of the, at the end of the process. All seven of our goals made it through the steering committee level and were forwarded on to the Legislative Goals Committee, which met in Raleigh last Wednesday and Thursday. I served as a member on that committee last week, and of the, and let me tell you, there were 200 goals that were submitted by the- that were submitted by the various counties throughout the state. So those 200 goals went through the steering committee process, and about 70 moved on to the Legislative Goals Committee, all of our seven being part of it. The Legislative Goals Committee considered all of our goals, and six of our goals made it through there. There are about 50 goals that made it through the Legislative Goals Committee on to the next phase, which will be reviewed by the association's Board of Directors, and then ultimately reviewed by the entire membership's voting delegates at the legislative conference in January. So I was very pleased to see that six of our goals continued to move forward, because if they have the association's support, we're much more likely to have success at the end. So the one that did not pass through is the one I wanted to talk to you a little bit about tonight. There was your goal number seven would require drug testing for unemployment benefit recipients. And that goal did not achieve support by the committee for several reasons. One, this goal, if you recall, it was brought forth by your development commission in their effort to be sure that we had a ready workforce for both existing and new industry. They had a great number of statistics about unemployment benefit recipients with substance abuse issues, and they promoted this goal that became part of our adopted list to assure that those receiving the benefits were drug tested and then disqualified if they had a positive screen. In the steering committee process and more so at the goals committee process, the committee felt like it just wasn't the right time. We have so many unemployment benefit recipients and so many folks who are still receiving unemployment benefits as they recover through the economically challenging times, that they felt like the timing wasn't right for this goal. They also were very concerned about who would pay for the goal, and if the General Assembly adopted such a goal, that they might push that cost back to the counties. The other thing they were concerned about was if an unemployment benefit recipient loses those benefits due to a positive drug screen, that we would be shifting the cost from the employers who were paying it onto the county human services agencies if they weren't able to meet their basic needs for their families, if that was their sole source of income. So for those reasons, that goal was postponed, sent back for further study, and did not make it through the cut. So I wanted you to understand the reasoning behind why it was there and the reasoning why it didn't go further. But we have the other remaining six. The development commission is committed to their goal, and they've been working with the Department of Commerce in the current General Assembly. It may in fact get some traction, but not through the Association of County Commissioners efforts. So that was the update on that one. And then I thought they gave some interesting facts that I thought the board might want to be aware of in terms of the makeup of the General Assembly and to kind of give you a better understanding of who we're working with when the session kicks off in January. Following the November election, the Senate, the North Carolina Senate is now made up of 32 Republicans and 18 Democrats, which is one more Republican than they had last year. The North Carolina House is made up of 77 Republicans and 43 Democrats, which is nine more Republicans than they had last year. What that means is that both are now veto-proof, because both sides from the governor, meaning there's an ample opportunity for one party majority to overrule any veto if it's needed. And that was a common occurrence in your, I shouldn't say common, but occurred more frequently, you've seen in the last year than it had moving forward. With the Republican governor now, it might not be such an issue, but there's an ample Republican majority in both the Senate and the House, and that had not been the case prior. There are 25 former county commissioners serving in the General Assembly, and that bodes well for counties, because we hope they will understand and adopt our thinking in terms of not shifting unfunded requirements from the state level down to the counties. And then the other thing that I thought was very interesting too, was that we have 54 new legislators this year in the House and the Senate. We had 42 new legislators last year, which means 96 members of your General Assembly in the last two years are brand new. And that may impact how you interact with them. So in terms of the need for additional education about where we're coming from, the history behind our goals, and what we need from them as we worked as partners between the state and the county. So we've had a 56% turnover in the General Assembly in the last two years, and that could be significant in terms of our approach. There are 848 registered lobbyists with the General Assembly, representing 924 different interest groups. So that's five lobbyists per legislator. And so we need to have our voices heard, as the other voices will be heard as well. I do believe, and the association supports the most effective method for lobbying on this end, is when local elected officials like yourself speak directly with the elected officials at the state level. I know everyone in this board engages in that when we have issues that we need to move forward, and so I encourage you to continue to do that. But I believe our goals are moving along nicely. I think it's positive news, considering the General Assembly session has not yet even started, that we're seeing signs of success on the road ahead. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you for that report. Yes, excuse me, Commissioner McGlaughlin, Commissioner Johnson.
I'm happy to know that there are 96 county commissioners. What percentage, if you might know the figure, would that be of the new legislator within the past, I guess, two years that are county commissioners compared to the total?
There are 25 county commissioners serving in the General Assembly. Last year, there were 25 county commissioners serving in the General Assembly, but in this last year, eight lost and eight won. So it was a wash. We continue with 25 county commissioners in the General Assembly, although eight of them are new.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to comment, Madam Chair, that Ms. Gallagher enjoys a good relationship with the leadership of our state association. And that makes a lot of difference when we present our desired goals. And I think we need to express our appreciation to our county attorney for staying up to date with what needs to be done on behalf of the citizens of Pitt County.
I agree, and thank you for doing that on our behalf also. Thank you very much. Our next item, Sheriff Phelps, a report on our federal inmate program at the detention center. You'll come forward, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Give you a quick handout, and I also have a slide presentation we can go along with. Give you a quick minute to pass those out. I'd like to report tonight on our federal inmate program, as well as our concerns I have about our inmate population. Our projected federal inmate revenue versus our actual federal inmate revenue. Turn to page three, you'll see a chart on your, on your PowerPoint as well, you can view that. It's on the PowerPoint, the orange or the red colored line indicates what we projected our inmate population would be. It's at 92. And each month thereafter is indicated in the green color. To run through that quickly with you, in July, we had approximately 76 federal inmates, August 70, September 62, October 66. Turn to the next page. The blue line will indicate the projected revenue that we would have to maintain every month to meet our goal at the end of the year. The red line indicates what we've actually collected versus those numbers I just shared with you. You can see those. As we go, if you want to stop and ask a question, I can answer that, or we can go with Drew, we can answer him at the end. It's your pleasure.
Just how many, how many less, I can read this later, but how many less are you having than you projected you'd have, Sheriff?
About 25.
Have a reason for that?
Couple of reasons, but let me, let me, let me look at the next page.
Maybe you can get to it.
Yes, sir, I think I can. Okay. The next page, you indicate the memorandum I have from the major detention center. It's basically, we're going to talk about functional capacity versus total beds available, or total beds available, or total beds altogether. Our detention center has 596 beds at the present day. We actually occupy 500 of those. The new wing we reconditioned has basically been mothballed and it's not been used. It'd take additionally 16 new officers we need to be hired as four per shift, including one sergeant, to open that new addition up. The difference between total beds and the functional capacity, there's always a lot of questions asked about that, so you can, I want you to really have that copy of this, so you can understand that. The different reasons are, we have males and females. We can't, by no means can we house those together, they have to stay separate. The juvenile law dictates that juveniles 16 and 17 years old have to be kept separate from the adults. The next item, to keep separates under classifications, we have multiple co-defendants that are involved in different cases such as homicides, robberies and stuff, and they can't be housed together. Another reason for keep separates under classification efforts is gang members. We have to keep those separate. We see in more and more populate gang members in our facility. The medical segment, you have to keep those separated. Our functional capacity is 460 approximately, and they have a formula, they work that out where it's generally 8% to 10% less than the total capacity, and that works out on average. So if you have 25 beds for females, you only have two in there, so they're empty beds that can't be used for any other purpose, so therefore they can't be used. The next page is going to also show where we're short at, and my concerns with the jail capacity. If we just use a number of 500 that match some capacity, the green line indicates the total number of inmates, including federal, and the red line indicates the county inmates. So if we were at full capacity with our full 92 that we wanted, we wouldn't have been able to house them because we're over capacity. In July alone, we were at 530. August, we had 555 inmates. This puts us, at best case scenario, 52 people over capacity. And when we're over capacity like that, we find them having to sleep on the floor and other areas. It's okay for that for a couple of days, but you get into it, people having to step over top of people, people are attitudes, for lack of better words, are flying. It's hard for a dormitor to have that many inmates and expect everybody to be on their best behavior. We're jeopardizing the safety of officers. We had an officer last week, was attempting to be stabbed with an ink pen by one of our inmates that we have incarcerated for homicide. Luckily, he was fast enough to get away from him before he did seriously, serious body injury to him. All right, go down to September, we had 519. Just our inmates, where we're showing 519 was 457, so we read at functional capacity there. My concern is we need to start preparing ourselves for the future. If we want to house the federal inmates, we're going to have to consider opening up a new addition. And we know what that's going to bring. The next page should explain the cost of, and I think we already went over that. But basically, to open up the new wing, get the 600, the 16 guards would be approximately $800,000 on the low side to open that up, just staffing those positions. So a question we need to be thinking about, if we want to push and continue getting federal inmates, where are we going to put them at? It comes a point in time where we have to look at the cost of what, are we going to be fined by the state for being over capacity, or are we going to be jeopardizing the safety of our inmates as well as our guards? And with that being said, I'll take your questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Sheriff, with the opening the new wing.
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, would that justify costs, positive costs for the county in doing so? I know there's a cost involved, but would that negatively affect the county in comparison to the number of inmates that you get in? In other words, would that, would we be better off with the costs of inmates by opening that wing, in your opinion, that we can attract?
I don't know if I can answer that. Basically, if we open, there's several possibilities. We can participate in the state misdemeanor program. The state pays $50 a day per inmate for that. Okay? And we can get, today, we're not participating in that program because we don't have the bed space. Any extra bed space, I'd rather see it go to the federal inmate, where we're getting $78 a day for that. So to open that up, and the question's going to be asked, can we fill it up with federal inmates? Probably not. And to follow up with the question you said, what happened to all the federal inmates, or why not? The federal population across the Eastern District of North Carolina for the marshals is down right now. It's down substantially. Our numbers versus everybody else is very, is very competitive. We're probably a little bit ahead of everybody else that participates in the program as far as our inmates. We continuously, every day, work this program in trying to get some more inmates. But the problem is, if they send them to me, and we're faced with the limit we have of capacity, they're not going to send them to me. So we have to find ourselves in a position that we can house more federal inmates. They tell me this time of the year, our general population will go down, and we're down actually today below 500. But, you know, with the Christmas season coming up and different things, people have tendency to be arrested and incarcerated. A lot about jail population, it's sad to say that the crimes they are committing are so serious that their bond requires them to be incarcerated until they can make bond. We have done a real good, we work really hard to sift through all the inmates that we can get out, the electronic monitoring candidates, the probation violations, the child support people. We've worked really hard to get those back out on the street. We have approximately 90 people on electronic monitoring today that would otherwise be incarcerated. So the inmates there now, their bonds are so substantiated that it requires them to stay in custody. There's just nowhere else we can breathe, nowhere else where I can move prisons around to make room, other than in trial. And, you know, we disposed of three cases last week that were capital homicide cases that we got them shipped out of our facility to Raleigh.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson and then Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, I wonder if you have discussed in detail your recommendations to the county manager for what needs to be done at this point.
Yeah, we've talked, and that's one of our reasons we're here tonight. I feel like that you need to be made aware, I don't think we're in an emergency state, that we need to go open a new addition up tonight. I think we need to look at, start preparing ourselves for next year and the year to come. Two years ago, I, we were busting at the seams at 475, you know, and we've got approximately, probably 32 people in custody today for waiting for trial for murder. And these guys, these people can't be released without making bond. But, so we got a lot of serious inmates right now. And what I want you to know is where we at, where we standing, and start preparing, if we plan in the years to come, what we need to be faced with. If we keep a record like we've been doing for the last four months, we need to really seriously look at opening up a new addition in the jail, just to meet our needs, and hopefully we have some extra space that we can put some, whether it be state prisons or federal prisons in, to recover some of our money.
Okay, Commissioner Hammond.
All right. Sheriff, how many counties east of Raleigh are you in competition with when it comes down to housing federal prisons?
I really don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
There's 600 in the Eastern District, about 600 federal inmates. We have the majority of them. We have 75, I think, but we have a larger part than most.
I can name the ones I know, if you want me to tell you those. I know Nash County, I think Craven County has some, New Hanover County.
Craven County had two at last county.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Webb and Owens and then...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, when we're talking about planning for the future, what's a rough timeframe you're looking at?
Next year is going to be, I predict that next year we'll be right on the threshold of having to be, we're too overpopulated, we can no longer stretch this bandage without it popping.
Okay. And I've seen it firsthand, a unique experience there. And I know this doesn't change the factors, but I think we all applaud the professionalism of your staff and the leadership down there for the job they do in staving off incidents like you had, and what they go through on a daily basis, having bodily fluids flung at them. And, you know, I hear the stories on the side here and there when I see them, so hats definitely off to them. And I think we should plan for this, because just the nature of where we're going, that we're eventually going to have to house more people. Of course, we run into the unique challenge of having to fund it somehow.
Yeah.
And that's where we may have to think outside of the box. But do, is there... And, and that's where we, we may have to think outside of the box, but do, is there any indication that the federal inmates will flow back upwards? I know you've got capacity concerns and safety concerns you have to take into effect, but i- is there any indication that after Christmas break, after or during the holiday season, that, I, I don't know how you gauge that, do you...
I don't really have a way of gauging it. My major here can almost roll the dice, and if he was a betting man, he would all win a lot, he can tell you exactly how many we're going to have every month, I don't know how he does it, but he, he's, I guess it's a lower average over the last couple of years where it's worked out. Most of our federal inmates, a lot of them are incarcerated by warrants that the local agencies have served, and the state, the feds have picked those charges up, so when they pick it up from a state case and adopt it to a federal case, they usually end up putting the inmates here, so we arrest a lot of drug trafficking cases and violent crime cases that they end up being federal cases, that's how we end up with so many of the inmates most of the time. And one thing I want to caution us about is not, not to be in a attractive market for the federal inmates. The federal marshals like what we do, they like our medical service we provide, they like our transportation we provide them, we always get our prisoners on time, we pick them up on time, they like that. So, I don't want to put ourselves in a situation that we're not topping the market anymore. It's a very competitive market out there, and we're on the caution side of playing our cards to everybody to hear what we're doing, so, because they're listening, I tell you that.
And I don't want to be in a position where we have to solely rely on that, you know, I want us to be stable and, and have a, a facility that's safe, and, and that can also bring in the extra revenues, whether it's federal or state misdemeanors, but if, if he has a prognosis of where it's going, just to get an idea of, of what we're looking at, what monies will be coming in, the ebb and flow of it.
The best-case scenario this year is we're going to be four hundred thousand dollars less than fed revenue.
That's the best?
That is the best.
Okay.
We're probably thinking it may be six hundred thousand if it continues at par. So, we wanted to make, this presentation is, is two-part. One, to let you know where we are, we know we're going to be down in our revenues by quite a bit, and to also let you know that as our county inmates climb, our federal inmates will have to reduce, so we just don't have anywhere to house them unless we do open the new facility.
Yes, sir.
So, that's kind of where we are, and being that we don't have the magistrate in Pitt County right now, that's also part of the reason that the numbers are down. Our inmate transport team are, are going back and forth to Raleigh to help keep those numbers up as best we can.
Okay.
But they're, from what the feds are telling us, the numbers are just not out there to get.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Owens.
Sheriff, the fifty-dollar a day misdemeanor that you alluded to, do you have many of those?
We could get them, it's the...
I mean, are, are you doing that?
No, we're not participating at all, we don't have the bed space for it.
All right. The difference between the, what you get from the feds and that fifty dollars, refresh me on how much they are.
Seventy-eight dollars on federal.
So, it's twenty-eight dollars.
Seventy-eight dollars a day more to house federal, and it's...
I think I know this, but trying to get a handle on it.
Yes, sir.
How, how many beds do you have that could be opened up?
Ninety-six.
And what's the cost of opening those?
Well, we figured up last year's workshop, I believe, it was like eight hundred thousand, just for, just for a cost of employees, we, you know, we already got utilities there and add...
That's sixteen-year, right, after sitting papers?
Yes, sir, that's a minimum, you know, and you've got to figure food costs in.
Probably...
You alluded while...
Probably a million dollars altogether, sir.
You alluded while it go to three murder cases that you just concluded and sent out.
Right.
Is there much of a timeframe between when they leave you and, and go to where their permanent place is going to be?
Yes, sir, usually before the sun goes down.
And how about on the misdemeanors?
Uh, really, real quick turnaround, maybe the next day, depends on...
I know one time it was a problem that ever been, you solved it.
We get rid of them. These guys here, I had to give hats off to them, they work this thing every day to keep this capacity down.
My purpose for answering that is just to let everybody know that you have done that.
They're doing that, I promise you, and these guys, hats off to the major and his staff, they do a great job keeping the population down, I am very concerned about their safety, we've got some very violent offenders out there, and I'd hate to imagine if one of our officers get hurt.
Doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Garris.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
The federal inmates are down an average of about twenty-five, right?
For us, yes, sir.
So, so are the, are the county inmates up?
Yes, sir.
Above what we, okay.
Yeah, chart, I've got this played right there, I'll show you. If you look at the one at the bottom down there where it says functional capacity, four eighty-two at the peak, that shows you where our inmates are, and then you add the green line is with the federal inmates, so in other words...
So, that, that four sixty, is that what we built in the budget for the county inmates?
Um, no.
That is our functional capacity?
So, what did we build in the budget?
I don't think we did, did we?
Well, we built the, the ninety-two federal inmates, and then the balance by default would be...
Be ours, we didn't anticipate our population, the local county inmate population going up as much as it has.
Okay, so, the net impact, even though we're down on the federal inmates, the net impact is that we have more people in jail than we projected.
On local level, yes, sir.
Right.
Which, this, this was coming, that's why we built the six hundred beds. I mean, we know that the population is growing.
Y'all know Major Phillips, he's, uh, Major Waylon's place.
Commissioners, I'd like to interject, the fear is that the actual population is going to increase in state, not feds, of course, that can somewhat be controlled, right now it's out of our control, but the total population we're, we're fearing is going to increase this spring to a, to a number that we're going to need those, those bed spaces.
In August, if you look at this chart, at five hundred and fifty-two, we had ninety, approximately ninety inmates sleeping on the floor that did not have a bed. Four hundred and sixty is our functional capacity.
Okay, Commissioner Owens.
Sheriff, am I, am I calculating accurate when I use the figure, eight hundred thousand to open the new beds?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have four hundred thousand down because of diminished of, of the federal prisoners. If the federal prisoners could be increased back with the rapport and relationship we've got, we cut it down to four hundred thousand to open that, uh...
New wing.
New, new beds, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just to the board, I think that's where we're going, we're going to have to pay for that somehow, and that might be an avenue to do it.
And just remind you, last year was a real good year with the feds, at one time we had as many as a hundred and twenty, one time.
Can I, that was a question that I wanted to ask, are you through, Ms. Owens?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. The, um, I know that we stayed up pretty much high with our federal numbers all of last year.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, how were the local numbers during the year last year? I'm trying to...
They were less, we, we were, we had less inmates, do you know those numbers, Major?
You don't, do you see what I'm getting at?
Example, we were having a hundred and...
I'm trying to figure out why we didn't hear about this problem last year.
We really didn't have the problem last year, we were down on our, when I say our inmates, the county inmates, we were down on those, we still had a hundred and twenty feds, and we never broke over five twenty-five thirty.
So, when we have the federal people down, we still have to reserve those beds for them, if they come back in.
That's right, and we have to provide beds for our inmates as well.
Right, but that's what I meant, we can't put ours in there.
That's a juggling act we have to deal with.
Okay, um, McGlong wanted, then, um, Webb.
Sheriff, I want to commend you on, on relationship building, because I think that had it not been for your relationship building and, and attracting feds, the federal inmates would not be as high as they are. So, that, that, that's, that's number one. Number two, that wing that we have, that we're not using now, are, are we using, are we doing anything at all?
Nope.
It's just empty, empty hub, nothing's in it?
Nobody's, nobody's sleeping.
So, we aren't doing anything in there?
Yes, sir.
And actually, it's an old wing of the old nineteen ninety-two, it's not part of the new addition.
Okay. It's been totally remodeled, though, and it's requit, repainted and brand-new mattresses, waiting to go.
Okay. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. One last thing, another unintended cost of people sleeping on the floor is something that we're going to pay for, is the lawsuits that we incur for inhumane treatment, I guess, in nineteen eighty-three's, or civil rights claims with inhumane treatment, people sleeping on the floor, and the additional, as Sheriff said, violence and stuff, it, it perpetuates when you cram everybody in. It's definitely a difficult situation, the problem we're going to, like Mr. Owens says, we're going to have to pay for it at some point, we're going to have to find a way to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and thank you.
And I think we're at a point, if we do consider next year to open a new addition, that we still have some room, that it won't have to solve the whole impact, we can juggle some misdemeanor programs into federal inmates and, and try to recoup till we can get back on our feet as a county.
Okay.
We're willing to do that, if we can get it passed.
Could we let our manager, excuse me, let our manager just respond to some of this, these concerns, I'd like to hear his, his take on it.
Well, I think they have met, and you're welcome to respond, but I think that's why Sheriff Phelps is here, is because when he made the report, he asked him to come, you know, and share with us what they shared and what they knew.
May I have your, your comment if, if the blowbells...
Yes, please.
Yes, Sheriff Phelps and myself met last week, and Dwayne Holder met as well, and it is a concern for where we're going to end up this year by June thirtieth, if we do have a hole of four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, because that will affect fund balance, and then for next year, when we created this year's budget for fiscal year twelve thirteen, we have a budget that basically lives within its means, you heard that, that phrase quite a bit when we developed it, and our whole idea was to create a budget that would be a, a base foundation that we could carry into thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, and the concept was that we would add things to this base budget as the economy grew, as the tax base grew. So, right now, we'll, we'll have a slight hole to fill, well, fund balance will help, will fill that by default, as we plan, the following fiscal year beginning in July one or thirteen, fourteen, we're going to have to, to pretty much count on some of this federal revenue decreasing, as well as count on the, the additional expenditure of, if we open F Block, which is eight hundred thousand dollars, and there's a million, too. Now, you can offset that by the, the, if you, if we choose to look at the state misdemeanor inmates and/or possibly, if we can get that federal count to increase back, but there are two challenges, and this is just one, I know the Board of Education's alluded, budget-wise, they'd like their category one, two, three, that seven hundred and fifty thousand back, so we're going to have some challenges next year, and this is just, they're starting to kind of creep upon us before we start on the budget, which will be about the first of the year.
And we're just trying to make sure that the commissioners, we're not just hearing this at budget time, we're trying to get it in our head, and I know they're thinking and working all the time, and we do appreciate that so much, and, but I think everybody needs to be aware of how we're progressing in this budget that we did put together, and some of the things we're going to have to look forward to during the budget time. Thank you so much again for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate the information. And our next items for consent, I'll entertain a motion for acceptance.
Motion, please.
Let's go, please. Okay, the items for consent have been accepted, and our next items are for, items for discussion, and Aaron below you, I think you are up next, and I think I saw you come in. Hello, Aaron, thank you.
Good evening. I think most of you may have seen in the day Reflected Ginger's article that kind of addressed most of the issues I was here to present to you tonight. We are in the exploratory stage of looking at possibly selling the bus garage property. We've had one individual that has made previous offers in the past that has come back to us and made the highest offer on record to the district. Very rarely do I get to stand before you and say that we have the opportunity to sell something or realize a gain from it much more than we paid for the property. This property was purchased in nineteen sixty-seven for forty-five thousand dollars, we have a fairly substantial offer in front of us, but general statute requires us to come before the commissioners, give them first right of refusal, and if you are so interested in the property, then to negotiate a fair market price back to the county. We have set aside some money in our current operating budget that we had planned to spend to renovate and repair our existing facility, because we operate almost three hundred buses across the district, and we're basically repairing those out of four bays. So, we've been in that facility for a long time, it's been addressed through many appraisals with number of safety, facility deficiencies, and we just feel like, and we understand we're extremely sensitive to the climate, but it's, in our due diligence, it would be a good thing for us to pursue that possibly revenue-neutral, to actually update that facility and provide us a solution that may last us for the next forty, fifty years. Be glad to try to answer any questions, any concerns you may have.
Commissioner Garris?
Are you at liberty to say what the offer is?
Um...
And, and the reason I'm asking that is I see that, according to the paper, the tax value was three point four million.
I can tell you, and you probably, we, right now...
Yes, sir.
Jimmy, Jimmy, I, I discussed that with the county attorney, and Scott, I think that if we're going to discuss figures, we need to be in a closed session.
Okay, that's fine with me.
And dealing with, with, and I wanted to know the same question.
Yeah.
But I can't do it out here.
But is that a closed session item?
If the county is considering the acquisition of the property, and this board wants to discuss in a closed session the possible prices that you would be willing to pay in order to preserve the ability to negotiate with the Board of Education to obtain a fair market value price, that would be appropriate for closed session. Once the amount was determined on, it would be reported in open session, but for purposes of negotiation, if the county is considering the acquisition, then that could be discussed in closed session.
So, then, the first thing we have to do is to stick with the agenda, and we need to make the determination as to whether or not we are interested in buying it, and if we are not, then he can answer that question in open session.
That's right, if you are not considering purchasing this property, then you would not have that closed session basis.
May I ask another question?
Sure, okay.
Yes, sir.
Because you can't answer that one right now. Where are you, where would you locate the, the garage?
Again, that is what would be in review by the school district, we would review parcels of land, just like we do in a site selection for school.
So, let me ask one question, this would be, you, that would be land you would have to purchase, you don't currently own land that would be suitable to transfer the garage to?
We currently do own one tract of land, right now, it's not zoned appropriately for a bus garage, but we do deem it to be a very desirable site for a possible bus garage, but that would have to be one of those next steps in the process that we would have to explore.
Because I'm just thinking that if, if we had a piece of land, then you could devote all of that money to the building and, you know, which would be good.
Okay. Commissioner Hammond?
Is that piece that you're talking, got reference to in a municipality or is it in the county?
The bus garage, I believe it's part of your ETJ, uh, city ETJ, excuse me.
It's in the city, right.
The present one?
Present property, off Mall Drive.
Huh?
The present property off Mall Drive is in the city limits, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Webb?
Quick question, is the, the sale of this going to be enough to, if you can answer it, or is the plan to use the proceeds from this to totally purchase and construct the new one, or will there have to be some sort of debt service the county or the school board will have to take out?
The current offer, which we would have to go through a very similar process to what we just went through in Third Street, the Board of Education would thus declare it surplus, then do a resolution that advertises what the offer is and who made the offer, and then we have to go through the ten-day upset bid process. What is currently being offered with the money we have set aside gets us very close to what's been given to us as a replacement cost for a bus garage of a district our size.
So, minimal impact of borrowing, if, yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, any motions from the commissioners relative to this?
Well, I don't know, and someone corrected me here, but I, but I don't know of an interest that we would have in it, and if we haven't had an interest in it, we couldn't afford to buy it.
An interest from anyone else prior to buying it?
No, no. The, the, the decision we have to make right now is whether or not the Board of Commissioners or the county has an interest in purchasing this land from the Board of Education.
And this is what happens with all property that we have owned and things have been built on, and we have given it to the school system or wherever, and then it, it has to be declared surplus by us and that we do not want to buy it.
And one other point of clarification, just so you understand, even if you proceed in this process and the board so advertised for upset bid, the Board of Education still has the right to refuse, and if they don't get the amount of revenue desired in order to do, that it could be, the whole thing can be scratched, and that was very similar to Third Street.
Right, okay, Commissioner Owens?
Just this one person, I can't tell you... I can't tell you whether the county has a use for it until I know the value, Jimmy Garris.
We can't do that until we determine, they decide, we can't be told that until we determine if we have a use for it.
Well, we do know what the tax is on it.
Okay. Yes, the tax value is right at about 200,000 an acre. The building has a nominal fee associated with it of about 250,000. Its current tax value is about 3.4. Mr. Elliott, they may be able to give us more exact, but it actually reduced by about 400,000 from the last appraisal where it was as high as 3.8.
Can you tell us what the, what your plan is for if you were to do what you plan to do? How much it would cost?
The estimate we've been given is between about 3.3 and 3.5 to rebuild a facility of that nature.
And you've already told us you're close to that.
With the revenue we have set aside, yes.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, and I think I heard you say whether we had an interest or not, you with the Board of Education would have the final say-so in terms of?
A final say-so in the upset bid process if they go forward in pursuing that process, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to further the discussion. I make a motion that the county does not have a need for this property. We do not have an interest in purchasing this property from the Board of Education.
Okay. And there's a second. And any further discussion before we vote? Okay, let's vote, please.
So we're declaring it surplus, too, huh?
No, sir. They will declare it surplus. We're saying we don't have an interest in purchasing it.
And under the statute, Madam Chair, it's not the responsibility of this board to declare it surplus, but to accept or reject the right of first refusal.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Owens?
Excuse me.
That's okay.
Please don't let me hold this up.
Okay, then it passes. Go forward with your upset bid, then we'll read it in the paper. Okay. Thank you very much, Aaron. Okay, our proposed revisions for the general policy for the appointment to boards, commissions, and committees, and we have all had a copy of that to look at over the past week. And then we got sort of a bulleted thing, paper that showed us some of the changes, which was a little bit easier to read, I think, than going through the whole policy. Our clerk, Ms. Hines, and Mr. Elliott worked on it, so.
Move we approve it.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, Mr. Owens, move for your motion.
Please forgive me.
No, no, you're fine. I do want to say that there was a lot of work that went in on this, and there's a lot of information that came out about how the different.
Won't work, Beth.
It won't work?
No, I think it, it was distracted by my vote while we were.
Oh, it's happened. You had to hit that new button that you don't hit very often. But I think it's.
I vote for the motion anyway.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Maybe we just need some new batteries. I know I do sometimes. Okay. While she's doing that, can you? There we go.
Move we approve in New Year's Eve's consideration.
Second.
I'll second that.
Second.
All right, we've got lots of seconds. Any motion, any discussion? Okay, let's. Thank you. And we have items for decision. Our PCC resident, Dr. Massey, you're going to send someone forward. Hey, how are you? And this is a request for use of PCC fund balance.
Not sure where the presentation is.
Okay.
Good evening. Pleased to be here this evening. My name is Don Heisey, and I'm the Vice President of Admin Services with Pitt Community College. And I'm here tonight to request the release of county fund balance for two projects that we have, we have under discussion. The, the first project is for construction of a greenhouse on PCC's campus. The current PCC greenhouse is located at the Pitt County District Park. It was damaged Hurricane Irene in September 2011, and the county park needs the space. PCC has been requested to discontinue the use of that greenhouse structure. Our intent is to start a horticulture program, a two-year associate degree program. We filed for the program approvals with the state starting the spring semester of 2013, and we expect that that approval will be granted in January of 2013. The program is based on community need and assessment. We needed an on-campus greenhouse for the instruction. We're proposing a 30 by 96-foot steel and polycarbonate structure. We will utilize some materials from the existing greenhouse. Some of the items were salvageable, tables, inside tables for the greenhouse, heaters, and so forth. The total cost of the project is $85,000, of which $65,000 is for the greenhouse structure, and $20,000 would be for site work. The second project revolves around student parking. Currently, we have an overcrowded student parking conditions due to the college growth and expansion. In March of 2012, Rivers and Associates conducted a parking lot feasibility study for Pitt Community College, and that study identified several parking expansion options for our use. In the fall of 2012, we conducted a parking utilization study to see exactly how far and how deep our parking was being utilized. That study showed that overall parking utilization was at about 96%. That means 96% of the parking was utilized at the south end of our campus. In fact, on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, between 9:00 a.m. to noon, we were at 100% utilization. There were no parking spaces available for students. We add to that, students are parking off-campus. They're parking at Sam's Club across the street, and they're also parking at businesses across Memorial Drive and Route 11. We're proposing adding a paved 120-space student parking lot at the south end of campus where parking space is at a premium. This will increase our student parking by about 11.1%. It will also increase the GOES Center parking, which we utilize for a lot of community events also. We will also add a short connector drive to allow for ease of exit from the southern end of campus via the Reedy Branch Road. Total cost of this project is $423,000, of which 193,000 of that will come from the PCC Student Parking Fee Fund. Those are dollars that we have collected from the sale of student parking permits. The balance of the money, $230,000, we're requesting come from the county fund, county fund balance. In summary, for these two projects, the county fund balance release requested is $85,000 for the horticulture program greenhouse, and $230,000 for student parking, where total county fund balance release requested of $315,000. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
What's the cost of design on the 230,000 project or 450,000?
That's included in the.
I know, but what's the cost of design? Have any idea?
Offhand, I do not know.
Do you have a design department at Pitt Community College?
No, we used an outside, we used an outside source. We have put out requests for information from five architectural firms.
You don't know what Rivers and Associates charge you?
Unfortunately, it was, it was before I was moved into the position. I don't know that figure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I approve, I move we approve it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We'll still have other discussion. Okay, Commissioner Smith, we've got a motion and a second to approve it.
The greenhouse, is it one that you're going to relocate for the $85,000?
No, it's a new structure.
It's new?
Yes, correct. The greenhouse itself is $65,000. Some of the site work would involve putting in concrete piers to anchor the greenhouse to it. We have, we would put that out for bids on the state system for a greenhouse. We've gotten some rough estimates at this point at 65,000.
Is it going to be a float system and an acuponic system?
I'm sorry?
A float system in the greenhouse?
A float system?
Yes.
It will be anchored, there will be, the greenhouse, the growing activity will be in tables.
Seems like a mighty high.
Okay, is that it? Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm concerned that it wasn't made clear, at least to me, the request being made to spend fund balance, and it wasn't designated whether that was Pitt County fund balance or PCC fund balance. And I'd like for the county manager to clarify that. We, I don't think that Pitt County has that much fund balance.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Yes, I did try to clarify the abstract that they are utilizing their fund balance for these capital projects, not Pitt County government's fund balance.
That's what I understood.
Commissioner Webb?
Where's that going to leave you all on fund balance? Leave us at about 750,000 in fund balance. Do we know right off what percentage that is? I'm sorry. 750,000 is about 15.7% of our budget, and it's compared to 69 million in capital assets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion to approve the use of the PCC fund balance for these two projects. Okay, it's passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Heisey. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Massey. Our next item for decision is the, on stop tomorrow here?
No, we're kind of running ahead. I think we're about an hour ahead. I can probably explain this item with the board.
Okay.
This is a grant application for a three-year grant, total of 502,352.89, is to support two existing child health, childcare health consultants and their program activities. And this is a continuation of the current program, which they're applying to the Martin-Pitt Partnership for Children. And with this, there is, Mike Taylor, no match? No match.
Motion to approve the grant application.
Second.
And I think this has been a grant that they have had in the past.
Yes.
It's just a continuation. Okay, and that passes, and we've reached the end of the agenda. I think we'll have our commissioners comment on, Commissioner Owens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to thank Ethan for serving on this board. That's just been a small part of his community service he's given over the years, but it's been enjoyable working with you for the four years here, Ethan.
Commissioner Hammond, any comments?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I'd just like to thank the voters in 2008 that sent me up here. It's been a learning experience for me, and I hope that I have contributed something to the county that it's a better county. When you look at this board, there's eight commissioners that will be seated, that are seated up here. Of course, Mr. James is not here, and I'm including him. And if you read the Thursday editorial in the Dale Reflector, they allude to the fact that the commissioners make the decision before we get to the board up here. I do not know of any decision that's been made by this board, whether the commissioners has made it before the board meeting. And I would, and also that the Dale Reflector editorial writers, they allude to the fact that we are not accountable to the general public. And I think these eight board members that will be left up here are very accountable to the public and very accountable to their constituency, not just in their area, but in areas of the whole county. I have not seen one commissioner strike out and say that his district needs more than others. We're really like, has been like a family up here. We all have worked together on decisions that we made that does affect just our district, but it's for the whole county. And I think when you look at the things that Dale Reflector said in the Thursday editorial, that we are not transparent enough, I don't know how much more transparent we can be. I think when they start talking about transparency and decisions that we make and that we are not engaged enough in what we do, they need to write it and then stand in front of a mirror and read it to the cells. I think if the voters had the right to replace these editorials that's in the Dale Reflector, I think they would be replaced, just like I will be after the 1st of December. And I think it's time for the paper to realize that governing bodies in Pitt County are accountable. There are men and women that serves the needs, and they do a vital service for the people in Pitt County, and most especially the Board of Commissioners. We, we treat all of them with dignity, and we treat each other with respect in all that we do. And I think that the Dale Reflector needs to look at the situation that the county commissioners are in, and not look just for negative things that's going on, and make up things. They should not just say that this is what you need to work on unless there's some specific reason that they can point their finger at one or the board and justify what they're saying. I think up here, we have a group of people that guides the county commissioners. Ms. Hines sitting over there, Kimberly, she gets the information to each county commissioner. She reminds us of appointments that we have. And then you have Ms. Gallinier sitting over there, and she's an attorney in which she doesn't tell us how to vote, but she tells us what would happen if we vote this way or that way, and leads it up to the county commissioner to make decision. She keeps us in line with what's going on in the legislature and the laws that pertains to us, and I appreciate that. And Scott, what can I say about Scott? Scott is one that brings information to us and keep us abreast with what's going on, not just in Pitt County or the many different boards, but all throughout the state. And I commend these people for what they do. They make jobs up here a whole lot easier in this way. And I just think that it's not good that we have a newspaper that prints things that are not factuals on the windows and tries to stir up something that is not factual and is not appropriate to county government. And I thank each one of y'all for having the right to serve with you, and I wish you well. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And as it goes by me, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for this past four years and the work that you've done up here with us as being a commissioner. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. Commissioner Garris?
I do would like to say thank you very much, Ephraim. It has been a pleasure working with you. We live not too far apart, and you have always been a community servant, and I am sure that you will continue to be. We appreciate all the work you've done while you've served on this board.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Smith. I brought with me this editorial that we're speaking about, and the, the most important aspect, so far as I'm concerned, is that based upon my conversations with the county manager, that I do not believe that management, that the Daily Reflector have contacted the county manager when he has indicated to them that he's available day or night to return their telephone calls, to clarify information before it is printed. And, and I think that, that the Daily Reflector management should contact the county manager to clarify the facts in every case, and I do not believe that that has happened in the past. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Longhorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ephraim, you, you have been a very keen leader, leader in this board. I, I think you brought up a term dignity and respect. This board, as you well know, adopted the term dignity and respect. There's a national push for that, and we tried to, as you alluded to, to, to continue to do that, not only through this board, but hopefully engage other boards and committees to do the same, and departments. You have displayed that, as far as I'm concerned, and I think you've been a very fine gentleman on this board, and we're going to miss you, and we wish you Godspeed.
Thank you. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've just got a few things to report and then say something about Ephraim. It won't take any more than an hour and a half to get through this list. Thanks for the time.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Just some quick information. I serve on the Library Board of Trustees, and we recently had our audit pass with flying colors. Greg Needham and his staff have done a great job in making sure that even in lean times, the library's running very efficiently and providing a great service, and even expanding into eBooks and keeping up with technology, and doing a good job there. I was honored the other night to speak at PCC, where I did see the parking needs, even at night, with Gamma Beta Phi, and they inducted, how many?
About twenty.
Twenty new members. And I remarked that it was nice to be invited because my GPA never got me invited there when I attended. So it was nice to be there. And on a little future reference, December 12th, I'll be attending the NCACC Board of Directors meeting as a member of the Executive Committee, and where we'll discuss those legislative goals. And of course, last but not least, Ephraim, it's been a pleasure to know you for the last two years. We didn't really know each other before I got on the board, and I, I think we were fast friends, and I think your knowledge of the history of this county would shame any historian who ever thought they knew anything about it. And on a personal note, you're probably one of the finest human beings I've ever met, and I'm going to miss you. But I don't live far away, so you will still see me. I'll still be at the Pig Palace. As far as serving with you, I'm going to miss serving with you. I've really, I think, benefited from your influence. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move forward generally.
Okay. Is there a second? Let's vote, please.
It's been too deep.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Can you correct that, Camerley?
I believe you, I believe you meant that, Ma.